On a really nasty day outside, Tuesday, February twenty second, twenty twenty two. I'll call the board of supervisors meeting to order. Larry McDebit.
Mike Stein is.
Well, this is two Tuesdays. Two, two, twenty two.
Yeah, I guess it is. Thanks for pointing that out. I feel so much better.
How many times I heard that yesterday?
Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the auditor's office. Luanne Goke, our administrative assistant. And the first item on our agenda as usual is David Dreyer, but we do have a guest with us, the new city manager, Josh is with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Welcome to Makoka.
Yeah.
And Jack Tukawi.
Yeah. So have you found a house yet?
No.
Did you get my note?
I did. I have to live in the city limits.
Okay.
I had the same water sewer and, you know, I grew up.
Oh, sure.
Outside of Stockton, Illinois. And I can't have that, so that's okay. There were hard no on that kind of mission.
I thought maybe, but I wasn't sure. I thought it would be a nice house, but anyway, okay.
I'll shut up again. Something into the city.
That's right.
Yeah. Have something for.
Okay, David.
First, we have on the agenda today, first item is a utility permit from the Kokona Valley Electric, doing work in Fairfield Township, section thirty four and thirty fifth by on twelve street and relocating some power service. The world fact.
It mustn't approve of Kokona Valley Electric's permit.
Motion and a second to approve the the right of way permit for Kokona Valley Electric. All those in there.
All right.
Opposed, motion carried.
Second item on the agenda was the resolution for the South Main Street Bridge Project. But we're recommending that be table till next week. Depending DOT getting some information together on their website so that we can release that information. So information that's associated with that is confidential still.
So I saw part of that. The bridge will still be open through construction.
Correct.
So you need a detour around that.
The detours for the Platte Street. Construction.
Oh, okay.
All right.
So it is going to be staged and that's how it was bid out or let out to.
Correct.
Correct. So I am as judge, Josh is aware of these implications that just come in from DOT.
Dave Memphis this past week, and I think we covered some hypotheticals as well about detour traffic timelines and I think consensus we were comfortable.
And we discussed the resolution, but we presumptuous in that we have the state's end of the process worked out and we just weren't comfortable that we should do it until that's done.
So I would recommend that we have a motion to table action on that till our next regular meeting. So second, the motion and a second to table action, all those in favor. I motion carry.
Next item on the agenda is the Platte Street Reconstruction Project that the city is kicking off this year that will go from, I think it's Main Street to the east. They want to use part of Summit. As a detour route, and so they were seeking the approval from the board to do that. We reviewed, we don't have an issue with that. We just moved on to stipulate that we still maintain the right to approve or permit any heavy traffic on the road if need be, just doesn't mean that we give the road to the city for the summer for them to control.
What is the wave limit on that road?
Oh, it'd be as typical. I don't think we have any.
Just don't want anything over.
Yeah, and I don't expect there's going to be, but it was just typical boilerplate. So we would recommend.
Oh, allow me that.
I would need to approve the detours presented.
It's been a motion in a second to approve Summit Street detour request. All those in favor. I'm wishing carry.
But frankly. Well, it's they see how through the crews are out. We're expecting them to have to be out tomorrow as well. We have a training plan for tomorrow, which was canceled and rescheduled, but bad roads.
No, and I'm gonna tell you, it is icy. It looks kind of slushy, but it's icy.
Any comments you'd like to make, Josh?
Well, I was gonna talk to Dave for a second after hearing some of the comments, so I will step out and come back in for a second.
Okay, that'll be fine. This time we'll reset. Join Dash Bolt, the new city manager for the city of Makoka.
Hi. Larry stopped in and Jack, we met by chance at the gas stations.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you, Mike.
Nice to meet you.
Um, what can I say? I'm happy to be here and I'm having lots of fun so far and what I would call the chaos of starting a new job. The wife's still the same as of, as of yesterday for the state of Iowa and Dubuque. Just looking forward to working with you guys on our future projects and then we have a lot going on as well, so I'm just trying to make sure that we have the pieces in place in short and long term planning to make sure that we finish those out, so. And I think we've laid out a pretty good plan to do so.
It's just.
If you have any questions for me, feel free to ask.
Just important to have an open line of communication between the city and the county. We all try to work together as best we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly we have some projects that are joint project, so I mean, we all like to be good neighbors and all that work.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's better, it's easier to work together than.
Right.
Opposed, so.
Yeah.
Feel good about it.
Absolutely. In DeKalb, we have a very strong relationship with the county. Say if there was any rivalry was with the sister town Sycamore. Sure, if you're familiar with Parks and Racket, it was kind of like Pawnee and Eagleton in a way, so. Yeah.
I would certainly welcome you to Makoka and Jackson County, but works out with you and your family.
Yeah, so far it's been very, very, very good experience.
We hope it's a long relationship.
Yeah, should be unless they haul me out of here, so.
Feel free to come anytime you'd like, any issues that you might have.
Yeah.
Let us know.
Yeah.
Appreciate taking the time to stop by and meet us.
Yeah, yeah, the mayor put a bug in my ear and I've been making rounds too, so it was nice to have that pride, like go chat with them, so. And Larry and I have crossed path that has a couple of times related to our wastewater treatment plant project and the water quality project that's happening, so. We had a good meeting and do those things and learn a little bit about, you know, some of the projects that Larry's working on, just kind of some of those context clues and learned a little bit about his past construction business and those things and hopefully, you know, as time progresses, I get to learn a little bit more about you guys and connect more at a personal level, not just a professional one too.
Sounds good. Thank you much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Good luck.
I hope I don't need it.
So is the person for the historical preservation on? Yeah, not.
Who's that?
Laura Carstens. Supposed to join us this morning.
A lot of stuff going on everywhere. So you see things happening.
Yeah, you have a busy summer with Platte Street and the bridge going on.
It's gonna be nice when it's finished.
Yeah, no doubt. Yeah. That bridge is way over long due, that's just a hazard for somebody.
We talked about that almost my entire presence on this board.
Yeah. And we did upgrade some. There wasn't a light there. People were crossing that at night. They actually get a light put up, which helps some. But still, even if you're walking, by the time you start, a car can sneak up on you pretty quick. I talked to Dave River yesterday, yeah. He got steel on the rope and put the seal on the outside.
I drove by yesterday and saw them working on it.
It's a hotel, Sunday night, they were till like eleven or eleven thirty. Just because the weather was good and the wind wasn't.
This is our building that we're putting out, story building out by the side of the new jail.
Right. And we asked him about the garage doors and he says, you know, we don't know, but then he sent me a message back and said they should be here Friday, so. We'll be able to drop those in and that much closes it up then.
John Hanson, our construction manager. I think this is the thirty fifth jail he's built, thirty fifth or thirty sixth in Iowa. And they always rented space in the past to store materials and stuff. And he said, after doing that for several jails.
Yeah.
It was more cost effective to build a building, cost less to build the building than they were paying in rent.
Right.
So.
And have to keep it when you're done.
Yeah, and actually it'll be a godsend eventually to have that extra storage space and.
Right. Is that, that, you know, I can approach this from a participation perspective, that's kind of one of the questions I want to ask is that the intention of the county is to vacate that sheriff's office and have the city use that building, is that?
No, we would have to buy that.
Yeah.
That's our intention.
You know, we've talked about all sorts of things and we're not, we haven't made a final decision, but we certainly want to talk to the city about it. Because since it's connected to your police station.
Yeah.
That would be the most appropriate use or whatever, but I'm sure it's a dialogue we don't have.
Okay.
You got any options or any ideas? Throw it out there.
We're, we're open to any use.
Sure.
And I've thrown that, asked that question several times in the last three years, because this has been an ongoing process, this jail facility. You know, and they didn't really have, seemed like they had a lot of interest, but you know, I guess we didn't really know what, we didn't know where either that we were going to determine.
Right.
We didn't have a use for it, or do we have a use for it as a holding space for court appearances or, you know, is, as a telecourt, is a telecourt going to be our main? Yeah. I mean, you read the papers, they're saying, you know, no, no, they don't want to build prisons anymore. They just want to release them back into the.
Oh, yeah.
One of the things.
Across the river.
I guess one of the things I would tell you for the information, you know, we went to all of these webinars on using stimulus money that we all got. And that can be remodeled by using stimulus money.
Yeah.
Because I, Lisa and I were watching, and I went, I walked across the hall and they said, they said not new construction, but their whole purpose was to space people out.
Right.
And so I said, you suppose we could use stimulus money to revamp the old jail once it's vacated, and she asked the county auditor, and he said, absolutely could be.
Yeah.
So we thought, oh, if we needed more space, that might be a place to use it, but we haven't determined what we're going to do with it yet.
Okay, well, if in a meeting or two or this summer, whatever it is that we have some advanced conversation, let's put something on the agenda together and just have a great dialogue together.
I think that would be a great idea.
Can't get all three together without creating a public meeting, so.
Well, we can have a work session though.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's nothing else.
Yeah. Are they on yet?
No.
Are they coming?
She said she was joining very soon.
Who was coming?
Laura Carstens.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'll take off.
Okay.
You guys enjoy your meeting.
Oh, we will.
Everyone be safe out there.
Yeah.
Especially walking around, so. Nice to meet you all, Mike. Nice to meet you.
Yeah. We'll meet again, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Be careful out there, don't slip on the sidewalk.
Oh, it'll be me, won't it? See you guys.
Yeah, hi.
Morning.
Morning.
Somebody else want to go or how do you want to do it?
Well, I don't know how long it'll take, this Christina. Luanne, do you want to do your portion as we're waiting? Anybody who reads Laura's own.
Good morning.
Morning. All right. Helen, how fun now? She didn't?
Okay. You're just. Join in here.
Okay. That'll work.
Okay, Laura, if you would like to address the board at this time, we'll we'll let you. Okay, there she is, Laura.
Yes.
You can go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, thank you, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here to represent the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission. The commission very much appreciates the board's support. The item on your agenda is what's called a certified local government annual report. You've seen these in the past. And this gives you an idea of what work the commission has been doing. And also an indication of where we hope to be in this coming year. We have had some difficulties with COVID, of course, that's kind of limited our ability to do some of the public education things we'd like to do. But we have been able to work on items on our annual work plan and we've updated that work plan for twenty twenty two. We still have vacancies on the commission. We have a twelve member commission with four vacancies, so that also makes it difficult sometimes for us to get things done. We've had lack of a quorum, for example, at a couple of meetings already this year. Really, I'm just here to express our appreciation, answering any questions you have about the the annual report. And again, thank you for your support.
Well, we certainly appreciate everything that the commission does, because it's just amazing what they're able to accomplish.
Yes, we have a, we have a very good group. I'm a relatively new commissioner and I would agree with you, they, they are very active and I, I think it's a, there's a lot of opportunities. Once the pandemic restrictions are lifted, we'll be able to do more, so thank you.
And I would say that in the very near future, we'll get you your new commission member.
Wonderful. That would be great.
Okay. Thank you very much for joining us.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thanks.
Welcome.
I have things signed. I had the phone to sign when we get done.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
We are approving.
We need a motion.
Annual report, this CLG report. That would be my motion to approve.
Okay, hold on a second. Another motion in a second to approve the report. All those in favor?
All right.
Hi. Approved with thanks.
Unless this needs the chair signature.
Correct.
I know the pay is good.
Well, he's a comedian today.
Double what it was last year.
Okay, well recess till we're joined by, with Christina. This time we'll reconvene and we're being joined by Christina, our zoning administrator. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dude, you know, it was Tuesday.
All day.
Two, two, twenty two, twenty two.
Why? What?
That's the day.
The day. He's, he's being smart.
Oh, Tuesday, two, twenty, two, two, whatever. Okay, I get it.
It was all over yesterday. Everybody's all excited about it. Had no school and they can't even celebrate it.
What can we say?
Need to go on social media more, I guess.
Or listen to it. Wait, they goes teacher this.
Yes. Oh, we're got it. Um, so the first item I wanted to bring was to request a public hearing for a rezoning request by John and Deborah Mollers. They own the property at three zero seven nine nine four hundredth Avenue and address their subdivision above you. They are currently zoned C one commercial and want to change their zoning to R one residential. So they did have, we did hold a public hearing with the zoning commission last night and they recommended approval. So I went to request to hold a public hearing, the supervisors to finalize everything.
Okay, I guess we know very little about that property. Why am I a little bit, but how it lies adjacent or compared to where the prime property was?
It is not adjacent, but basically like a jump over.
South, right.
Uh, north.
More.
You know, the parking lot in that area is adjacent to that. Yes.
That's where the old restaurant was.
It's number of that.
Just, yeah, just two properties north of that.
Frank's was the old restaurant, that's what we.
Yeah, that's what we did. No, so, okay. Is that where those rental cabins were?
Yes.
Yes.
Time, yeah.
Yeah, one of that, the Mollers have one of the rental cabins.
Okay.
Yeah, and then there's the Burterson's own cabin south of that, and then it's the Frank's, so Kevin, Kevin Restaurant.
So this is basically just for to set the public hearing.
Yeah, to set the public hearing for Tuesday, March fifteenth at nine AM.
Okay.
Double.
Second.
Motion in a second for Tuesday, March fifteenth at nine AM for a public hearing. All those in favor?
All right.
I motion carry.
Okay. So the other item that I have is a request for a waiver to the setback to the right of way. This is for a two thousand four hundred ninety head swine confinement building. That is just north of the property at two zero zero three seven South Gary Allen. Um, I don't know if you can pull that up on Dubuque. So we can kind of get an idea.
This is, so we weren't.
And I was just presented with this like late last week, so it, you know, we don't really have all the details ready to make a motion on this, but I just kind of wanted to start discussion about it.
Well, when I read it, I'm going.
Yeah.
I have very little information.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We just highlighted the house area. I, so we, I mean, I assume we're talking about a parcel, just maybe to the.
It is just to the north of that.
There's a.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I could introduce ourselves, Christina, we've only got to meet on the phone.
Yes, okay, I was wondering if you guys are, so they're from Pinnacle.
So I'm with Pinnacle and we're a small consulting company that does permitting for livestock producers across Iowa. And we're working with Leo and his brother-in-law on a a new project. It's just a single building on a property that, that they just purchased. But as we place that building, one of our, our main goals is place of where it's going to be structurally most sound, and we go through, we go through quite a process with DNR. This is our prep to build that thing. So I'm not going to bore you with all of that today, but as we place that building and again, where it sits there along the road, that property falls off to the north and west, so we the state gives the counties a hundred foot setback off the right of way. And when we run into these situations, we'd like to keep that pit floor on what we call virgin dirt or undisturbed dirt. And if we could slide that within that hundred feet, that fifty foot off the road right of way, it'll allow us to keep that pit floor on, on virgin dirt. And as yeah, I, I gotta look at this picture here just a minute. Yeah, that'd be great.
Do you mind if I walk over here, you guys?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so this is Leo Costello.
Little stool over there.
So Leo owns a building just a little over a half a mile of the road.
I didn't catch your name.
And I'm Kent Cross.
Okay, can, can I just say a couple of things? Because I, I know the names, I know you guys and stuff, and I haven't been here for eight years, so I don't know. But my wife and I purchased these farms twenty years ago, or just short of twenty years, we've owned two farms. The Ellinger Farm was sat between the two farms we've owned for years, okay? And in December first, we purchased the Ellinger Farm at auction, okay? That's what happened. So basically, if you follow this road, if you could expand this map out, I can give you a better lay of the land. We've been operating down here for a couple of decades. My son wrestles for the University of Iowa, the family story. I guess I'm giving you a little background, I don't want to bore you. But he's crazy. He didn't learn anything in college because he wants to come home and farm, so. But God bless him. It's great. I'm happy. And so that's kind of the background. We have the ground, about eight hundred eighty acres here. Plenty, this is a proper extension. I don't want to do any talking. That's why I have Kent. I'm feeding cows and farming, you know, so I, I hire Kent because he knows how to do this stuff and that's why you know, he's here and otherwise, I think this is, I don't know, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. At the auction, if you see the blue area where the house is, I could, let me just walk up here. There's, the house is here. The Ellinger Farm was five tracks and up here, just out of view is a farm, this farm here. It was old Cecil Canute is who I bought the farm from, Barnable Farm. And right about where it says that is, I have a current hog barn I've had there for eight years. So building there would have been, would have been an option, but I like this site better. It lays sorry.
It's okay.
A little, just keep.
Just a little bit further up there, there you go. So and that barn's been there for eight years. As far as I know, we've been good neighbors. I mean, it's been no issues. This is all gravel road. If you followed it up here to the corner and take the gravel road this way. So this is the farm, this is the farm, this was track two we just purchased. Okay, this is track two, that's track one, we purchased that. So track one's on the other side of the road, but if you follow this all the way up here, all the way around the road, we purchased this farm maybe twenty years ago. It's a hundred and sixty acres. There's three tracks that come down here, one over to this road. So if you follow the road over, I don't own this forty here in the corner. But this piece we do, and then you just follow it all the way back around the corner. I don't own this hundred and twenty here, Phil. He's a longtime tenant, good family. Phil and Shane, I mean, I worked with them for all these many years. Phil Shane decided not to farm anymore, but up here. And then, so I don't own this here, but then we're back to the original site. So you can see it's all the way contained. I do have eighty acres on that other side. But anyway, that's what I own. I'm just trying to lay it out for you. This is.
So do you own the house there?
I did not purchase it on December first. The lady that purchased it. And the reason I didn't purchase it is because right back here, sorry for doing this to you, just telling you the background story and all this. But if you go down a little bit. I mean, up, sorry. So for years, Gary Stefan owned this building here and it cuts on this side and it's the corner of it's hard to show the road. It comes back. You see where the forty splits? Well, he owned like, I don't know, that time it's two or three acres, it's zoned R one. So I have a building site right there. And when I purchased it from him, he paid taxes on this side of the building for like thirty years and found out after I bought it that he Nancy Collins owned that side, so I gave her the building because I'm like, why, I didn't really know how to dispute it. I bought it, it was legal, I bought it. And then one day she told somebody at the county, no, she owned it. And I just didn't really know the process and it just made sense. it just made sense for her to have it. The bottom line is when I was building this barn eight, nine years ago, Gary came to me and said, nobody's ever wanted to build on this. I've tried to sell this lot. So I have a building lot that I could have built on, run a water line. I could have water from my well of the barn. So I really didn't. Then after the auction, the lady that bought it, she lives in Delmar. And maybe you know where I'm sure, maybe Amanda Filer, maybe she's been in front of you guys. She operates here and lives in Delmar. Whatever, Clinton Jackson, she's a house flipper. Her husband's a contractor. So come to find out, she had no intention to live there, but wanted to buy the house and remodel it and flip it. So we got together. It was a simple conversation. Here's what I'm gonna do, flooring, countertops. So I signed and have a purchase agreement, put earnest money down. Supposed to close March fifteenth. Okay, so she's saying she's gonna be done by March fifth. The cows start calving March tenth, so.
You will own it.
Yes, I, yes, I really, it works better. I mean, if you look at the house, I own the land on both sides and it's four acres through the middle. So I've been making improvements here. I put in a lot of guardrail and a new automatic water and I did a lot of things on this property since December first and this is where my son and I are gonna operate going forward. We have a hundred and thirty-five stack house. Um, the hog barn makes sense for, I need to tell you guys nutrient costs are on the rise and yes. I've said too much. I'm sorry. I just wanted to give you a little background because I think, yeah, I think it's helpful.
Is this a confinement building that's off to the right other, that, that one right there?
No, this is a cattle shed. The Ellinger side, Ava used to milk cows here. And so this is all free stalls and this is, this area right here basically is where I'm gonna cab the cows and then this is a hay shed and this is a machine shed and this drying bins, so. These are just round bales, but no, this is all, this was the old parlor and milk, excuse me.
I just can't remember what that building was, so they didn't convert that into an open monoslope from the, from the south.
No.
So where, where this proposal is, so I would call it if you went northeast, which would be right there where that arrow is, or right where this cursor, right about there.
Yeah.
Is there that much of a drop off that you can't move that building to the.
It, it probably drops off fifty feet. It's a pretty big drop off. It doesn't drop off along the road. This road is flat. So we're, and this is getting into, Kent's gonna hit me if I keep talking, but right, because Kent knows this stuff, I don't. But it was really cold the day we went out there and staked it. I had an excavator and they had their fancy equipment and stuff and so we staked the fifty, I think, basically it doesn't, it's pretty flat this way, but that way slopes off pretty good.
Can you bring up the elevation?
The total.
Total math, yeah, okay.
Does that want to answer Mike's question, but I mean.
No, I, 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 I will.
And you can kind of tell the fingers that encroach there from the north, those are all waterways, so if you envision that.
Some like connect explorer, but we don't have that on this one.
And I, I don't actually have the total layer with me or I.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd show you.
That's just good, I know.
Yeah.
Your office, you can just click on it and it shows up.
Yeah, I have the layer on mine. It's on this one.
Yeah, I can see the waterway.
So yeah, if you can envision there, they're pretty good sized waterways just because there is so much slope there as we go north and and like Leo states, right along the, the road there, it's a nice level platform uh and that's where you'll see our placement map, we're parallel to the road to try to catch that, catch that uh platform there that, that runs right along here, so. So yeah, if you look, this, this single building will start right here and then um uh we'll be applying for a county permit hopefully to add a driveway, so it'll have a nice circle driveway, horseshoe driveway where the trucks will come in here, service that building with old pigs and feed. And then they'll go around that bin site and then back out this existing house driveway that, that Leo has that came with the uh eight acreage, so. So yeah, we're, we're trying to lay right in there. Approximately twelve rows, uh twelve rows would be about sixty feet or thirty feet.
What is the number, Kent, for the master matrix?
Yeah, it's twenty-five hundred head of swine, twenty-five oh one.
You're, you're twenty-four ninety.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and the reality of it is uh these barns will probably fill in that twenty-four hundred to twenty-five uh the sow units, it's not a hard rule, but uh generally flow about twelve hundred pigs uh uh per sow unit, so they put two of those together to fill it at about forty-eight hundred and they'll overstock it uh. They'll overstock it a little bit, but, but yeah, that, that, we permit up to that twenty-four ninety-nine uh without going through the master matrix process and, and the uh construction standards are all the same, pit designs all the same, all the preliminary siding works all the same. Uh, the only step missing uh when we stay under twenty-five hundred head is just that master matrix corner.
So how deep is your pit?
Uh, it'll be an eight foot deep pit and it'll sit into the ground uh because again, uh these new buildings, the integrators especially like the forty-eight inch loading dock. So it's gonna sit out of the ground approximately forty-eight inches, so it's gonna be about five foot in the ground and, and about three to four feet uh above ground and then the pigs will come right out at a forty-eight inch dock and walk right on the trailers without going up a ramp and those sort of things.
Okay, so how do you, how do you form that?
Uh, most cement forms today are ten foot walls and so they'll actually pour a ten foot a wall, continuous pour, so the floors are poured first and then they're uh they're tied into the walls with rebar and uh a water stop, so they'll actually have a uh uh a gasket uh that goes all the way around the floor of the building. And then they'll pour a ten foot wall above it uh. That wall is uh eight inches wide and then at eight foot, they bring that wall in two inches and then it'll have a stub wall going around the building that the pigs are still against a cement wall on the inside, but then the slats sit on that two inch step. And then uh across the building, there'll be uh five piers that run lengthways on those buildings and so those are ten foot gang slats. So it'll be uh seven sets of slats going across the width of that building. The building's seventy-one feet wide. Um, but there'll be seven gangs of slack going across that building and then they're all routed into place. Once the slats are set, then, then the building, you know, will be backfilled and then the framing goes back up. Uh, the other thing about the uh pits, they're uh they're uh, they'll have a uh perimeter tile, so again, to keep groundwater pressure from trying to push the floors up, uh the, it's just like your sump pump or your perimeter tile maybe around the house, but we'll take that water and keep it away from that pit. And then that'll um, um be uh routed uh and daylighted away from the, from the building, but to get groundwater pressure away from that pit.
So does that flow into a reservoir or something? Or does it just dump right out?
Um, there, we got three options. DNR lets us do, one, it can daylight. Uh, and again, we're, we monitor that to make sure it stays, stays clear. If there's any sense or smell of manure, uh, we're required to cap that off and call DNR right away and do an exploration of it. Um, we're also allowed then to hook it to a field tile if there's one closed. Uh, and if we do that, we've got to have an inspection port and a slice valve. So again, if, I, and the inspection port allows us to inspect that water if there's any in it. But then if, again, if we catch any, any suspicion of manure or odor, uh we can slice that slice valve, stop that water flow to the water system and then uh investigate with the DNR uh where the leaks at. We.
The one thing I would say on that, you weren't, yeah, Kent wasn't able to be there. We had staked this and sighted it up by the other barn. We were gonna do a double site and master metrics. That originally was what I wanted to do. But I can explain why we had to change and move to here, but it's kind of a long story and I don't know that it's relevant, but so the day that the excavator came back to state this, where we moved the barn to another, to this site. If we are allowed this, this waiver today, if the, the, if you put it back up there, but the north farthest corner is perfect for topography and grade. This right here sits, this sits about, I want to say this is like two to three feet above, will be cut back and leveled all off. This, all this area right here is a parking lot right now, gravel, so it's all gravel. It's not quite big enough for semis to come in and go around like up there, so that's why I think it'd just be really nice to have to you. But if we're granted this waiver, this corner right here where the barn is comes perfect to sunlight, sunset, uh.
Daylight.
Daylight. So it's the perfect topography to have that tile come right there and that's how my other barn is and from an easy inspection, you can just see it, it's right there. Nothing comes out of it. So that's the idea is that nothing comes out of your drain around your house. I mean, it's there for precaution like Kent said, but the reality is you hope nothing ever does because you're grading this barn four feet down, so all the water is gonna run away from it. And it's sitting up and if we daylight here by moving the barn up, if we don't, if we don't do the waiver and we have to sit back a hundred feet, this back corner could be as much and the engineer's not gonna like five depending, five, it's gonna be a corner and it's, it's falling off away from the road. It could be as much as five foot of fill. Now your tile and that would be clean gravel filled solid. I even proposed filling it with concrete. You know, because they're going probably be three or four yards of concrete. It's just maybe the size of this room and pour it five foot. You know, I mean, it's a couple of loads of concrete and then the tile would come on top of that concrete versus on virgin dirt like Kent said and then it sunlights or whatever, daylights. So then it, you can just visually see it like my other barn, nothing ever comes out of that tile. You can walk right over there and see it. And I do that occasionally, probably a few times a year just because the back of my current barn has a composter. So we're composting any dead animals and we, you know, keep that real nice with three bins. Same thing I'm proposing here, the back of this, so it's the public doesn't see it. It's well protected. It's got its own roof and all of that, so that's why on this waiver issue today, if we're granted this, it would really be nice for the tile coming out because it comes right onto the virgin dirt. There'd be no fill in the back corner.
What kind of ties you use in the concrete walls?
Uh, it's, uh, no, it's, it's rebar, but um none of the rebar is in contact with the manure. Oh, you're meaning the ties.
Ties.
Uh, they're a non, they're a non-removable uh they're a non-removable tie um and quite frankly, I don't know if they're stainless or not, uh but it's DNR specified.
A lot of them use plastic.
They could be plastic today on the ties. DNR won't allow, there's new fiberglass rebar. Uh, DNR is not allowing that yet in the floors and such.
Really?
Uh, but the ties would be something different where you're just tying the walls together through the pouring process, so.
Cause I've heard if you use the steel ones, the manure can take that out and that leaves a quarter inch hole.
Yeah. Yeah.
All the way around the building.
Yeah, uh, I know DNR uh requires a non-removable because again back early in this thing, they, they were removable ties, but uh, but uh to tell you today that it's stainless or mild, I'm not sure, other than I know it's DNR dictated.
So who inspects that?
Uh, DNR does.
DNR does.
So we're required uh three days before the first cement is poured to call DNR and that gives them time to schedule a site visit. Um, uh, to make sure again, the floors are rebarred correctly. Uh, especially if we've got a wet spring or a wet window uh when this is scheduled. They can make sure those rebar are chaired up and out of the mud and all of those appropriate things to get, to get a good floor. And again, that's the most important, well, it's all important for us, but especially the floor, you want to make sure we get it.
So the walls are tied, I mean, with a keyway plus they'd have rerod sticking up.
Yeah, there's a J bar down into the floor that's stuck into the floor there through the, through the floor port.
Okay.
And then that goes up and then the, the walls go over the top of that. Um.
I don't understand why they won't go with fiberglass.
On the rebar, um, just, it's newer technology and DNR is pretty conservative when it comes to these things, they.
Because that would have, I mean, the manure would have little effect on that at all and it just destroys steel.
Yeah.
Makes it rust and then it explodes and cracks the concrete, but you can see it on the bridge out here by Walmart. You just look on the edge, you can see where the rerad is rusted and it's just pushed the bridge apart.
Um, and I'm, I'm not an engineer, but again, it's out of a sense of caution that they.
I know a lot of them use uh the ICF forms. They're styrofoam forms with the plastic ties and then they strip the inside.
Yeah, I.
That way the plastic.
This will be a, this will be a cord wall.
Well, these are cord walls too.
These won't be the ICF forms. I don't believe you've got those on your other building. It's a, it's a cement, solid cement wall, no styrofoam on the inside or out.
No, I think, like you're saying, they take the inside off and leave the outside.
Or you can strip both sides. They make a stripable tie.
I haven't seen them done with the ICF form, so that's uh.
And that would be a concern because the other steel ties do over time.
Yeah.
Get rust away or. I'm just. And I would think that the NR would understand that because it couldn't. There's a lot of pressure, you know, on an eight foot wall, it's the water. Trying to remember what the numbers are on that, but a square foot on the bottom of an eight foot wall, there's three thousand pounds of pressure pushing on that when you pour a wall. So when it's full of fluid, you've got that kind of some pressure on it. They're like a, like a size of a pencil is what's going through that for the tie and that's left in there. And if that corrodes out of there, then it's just a, another channel for it to leak over time. I mean, it's not gonna do anything like yours, but. And I know they do use the plastic ones to relieve that problem. Just to heads up on that as well.
So Christina, my question to you is their process, normal process for you is to take the border adjustment out, is that correct?
Um, well, this is a setback to the right of way waiver or the right of way as the requirement is to be one hundred feet. Um, so I typically wouldn't take it to the border adjustment.
So they won't look at that and, and, and discuss. I know we have one garage situations before as far as that, you know, that they've looked and.
Yeah, for garages, um, I guess this is an egg building and egg buildings are zoning exempt. Or that's my understanding of the farm exemption. No. I mean, I, if that's something that you want them to do, I probably could bring it to them. But I, I guess my opinion was, is that because it's an egg used building, it is exempt from zoning requirements.
Have you been there?
Yeah.
I mean, I know where it's at. I was at the, at the house the day after the sale, I actually bought something on the table.
Yeah.
But uh, I mean, and I know the Ellinger family as far as that goes, but for me to say yes to this today without physically looking at it or drive by, it's tough for me to do. Um, I, I don't know what you guys think, but.
As David indicate, I know he said it was gonna go over and why not?
Um, yeah, I don't know. We could have David come in here and see if he has an opinion here. I mean, as far as, I don't know if he looked or if Secretary Rose has any, any concerns.
We started with David and then he turned it over to Christina, but.
Hi, could you want to come over and talk about this? Okay, thank you.
How tall is the building on top of the foundation?
Uh, that work. The walls will be approximately ten foot tall, the sidewall and then it'll have a peaked roof. Um, uh, and I don't know what they're using for that roof specification.
Do you have any comments on this that that?
Concerns?
No.
Has, has Mike or Roger or anyone looked at it?
Not even yourself? No.
What, what kind of timeframe are you looking at here or what you're?
Well, I purchased the building in December and construction.
Purchased the building, the, the building.
The building package. I have another option, but just so you, the board supervisor understands, I didn't build it without them. I have another site approved in a different county. I farmed it, I've owned, owned it for a long, long time. My nephew farms a farm west of Davenport, okay? And so that is an option. Owned it for a long, long time. My nephew farms a farm west of Davenport. Okay, and so that is an option, but I would prefer. I have my son coming home to farm. I prefer to have this site so he can make a living, chore two barns instead of one. Kid can't live on fifteen hundred dollars a month, so. You make three thousand chore in two barns. He's a college grad. We got our cows and. Hey, quit, I mean, it's not, I, I don't know. I'm saying, I don't know what I should say to explain. It's a family farm. We're trying to do it with the family operation. This was not practical before we had the ground. We purchased Ellinger. We made a commitment to Jackson County, been lifelong dream of mine. I knew Si and Ava for twenty. Well, ten years, Si died ten years ago and Ava, they're great people. This opportunity. I've been dreaming about for twenty years, you guys, and so it finally came together. That's not really your decision or problem today. But my timeframe is, I would like to construct, start construction in April. That would be my ideal, weather permitting, maybe May. It takes some sixty to ninety days to build the building. And I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I think I need to start construction sometime in May, I believe. So I don't know what you guys' timeframe is, whether this is approved today or when the next opportunity to approve it would be. I don't see.
We need to have, we meet every Tuesday.
Okay, so, okay.
So are you, is your son planning on moving in that house?
Yes, he's moving there April first.
That makes sense and a piece of.
Yeah.
Running it, okay.
Yep, he's gonna move into the house and uh, the day of the open house. My wife works a full-time job, didn't take off. My daughter did go. She loves the house. I love the house. I'd like to move there myself, but I don't know if my wife wants to move there and she hasn't been there and they just. Closed last Friday, so they're in the middle of remodeling it. And new flooring and cabinets and countertop, all that. So when it's done, we will be closing on it. My son's moving there for sure. He'd like to move home after college with his mom and dad. But my wife hasn't had the opportunity to be there yet, so it's gonna be her decision and then she can drive to Dubuque every day or. I drive to this farm every day, every day of the year. So it's fine. It's twenty-two miles from my house. I don't mind it, but that's our plan and I can't tell you guys today that my wife and I are gonna move there. I would like to, but. You stay happily married for twenty-eight years, just.
We've got that on. Okay, do we want to delay this a week so we have an opportunity to go and drive by there or wishes of the board?
I don't see any issues with this one. But if you have some, if you want to take a look, that's fine too.
I don't think I have an issue with it, but I just, out of peace of mind, I would like to drive by, take a look at it. I mean, I don't know if a week bothers you or not, but. I get where you're at, I. I mean, I don't, Kent could tell you the process better than me. That's why I hire somebody because this is complicated with D N R, it's complicated with. County and.
Well, let me tell you this, Leo, normally if somebody walk in here in three days and say, I need this permit today. That don't normally happen. So I'm just saying a week shouldn't bother anybody to say, oh yeah, go ahead and go take a look.
So Ken, I guess I defer to you.
And we want your support and and that you are comfortable with your decision, so um. Uh, we've got all the pieces of the puzzle put together for the D N R side of it, so um, if we could meet. Next Tuesday again, that'd be great. And quite frankly, I'll, I'm gonna be, I'll bring this book back and. Your piece of the puzzle will be the last one and then we would submit the permit. The county actually gets the first copy. And then I would uh, take the copy of, I would take your delivery receipt that says, hey, the county's received it and then we give it to D N R. And then they go through it uh, to make sure we haven't missed anything um, as far as residences that have popped up. Anything like that that isn't shown on the map or that we haven't drawn in, so. But then uh, and then our approval would be uh. If we're next Tuesday, I think that's March first. Uh, I mean, we would be at an April one construction start date and I. I'm not speaking for Leo, but.
I just, I know he would want. One delay here, then there's a week and four different points, there's a week delay, that's a month. Then it's an issue, but no, a week doesn't, as long as there's no other delays, then I, yeah, Kent's comfortable. That's perfect timeframe for me. I'm not gonna start construction till April.
I mean, what I'm saying is, I, you know, like, we received this last Friday and I haven't had the conversation, talked to secondary roads. I mean, we had issues up in that area before because of confinement and maybe you know or do not know. Delaware County don't allow confinement on railroad. Oh, really? Yeah.
It's a which part of your county that don't?
And we had that conversation started. So I mean, I haven't had a chance to talk to David or David, but I, I just.
We, we want your support on it and and uh, so we're not, we're not trying to rush it through bringing.
These two can certainly approve it. I don't have an issue with that.
I mean, I want your support. I, I need your support. I'm not really wanting.
We want to be good neighbors, you know, that's what we're here for.
I've tried to be a good taxpayer and do the things for Jackson County.
We realize that.
I'm, I'm trying, sure.
I think that would be my suggestion that we delay action for a week, give us an opportunity, anyone that wants to go up and drive by. Um, I pretty much know where it's at, so if we want to do that and then we could table it till next week. And take action on the request at our next meeting on March first.
And you guys, obviously you're welcome to come do drive by, look at it, whatever. I'm there every day, so if you want to call me, I'll give you my number. I can show you. You know, you kind of have to go in there. I've got some continuous new, continuous fencing I put in with two silver gates there. If you walk through there and go out, you'll see um. It's falling off to the right, the need for this fifty-foot variance. I mean, that, you know. That's what we're really doing today is a fifty-foot variance, correct Kent?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the approval today. A week doesn't hurt us on our timeframe. That's fine. Go and look at it. If you want, I'm happy to. Walk it out. I, the cows didn't move them. I had three black barrels there on the, right here. Sorry, Dave.
Christina, is there anything as far as notifying neighbors or public hearing to any of this?
Um, I actually had asked about if there would be a requirement for public hearing and there's not. Um, and then, you know, I guess another thing, the egg district zoning setback requirement is forty feet, so. Um, they are meeting that, so.
Okay, so if you drive by, since it sounds like you get, you want to, there's three black barrels right here and assuming that I, they got salt in them. And the cows are out here is where I'm feeding them. On frozen ground, but there's a black barrel, there's three, the one at each corner. And again, they have salt blocks in them, so the cows moved the barrels, but they haven't moved them in two or three weeks or a month. Been putting, but the middle one is where the loadout will be. Okay, and the other ones are the two corners of the building. Well, if you're standing here, right here is a double gate you can walk through and I'm happy to. If I'm there when you guys are coming, but uh, you can walk out here and then you can see what I'm talking about. It's pretty flat this way. And right here from the corner of my shed to the corner of the barn. We're gonna have twenty-five feet, so I would move it closer, but would I like to have fifty feet? Probably, but. That's as wide as a road and it's gonna be gravelled, so getting tractors through there and hay back to the shed, that's. So I'm doing everything I can do short of moving this building and I don't, I don't want to do that. Plus, we have some setback from the well, which were, I think, twenty-five feet, so that, that would be twenty-five feet closer to the house is all we could do anyway. And then that would require, this is a really nice seven thousand bushel grain bin, the new floor and everything in it, and the machine sheds all steel, so it's like. These are great structures.
But you're using existing driveways for access?
We're actually looking right. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't have that copy.
We're, we're looking to put a driveway in here so that it would be a U shape, so that they can.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what she is. So the driveway would come in here. There's a culvert right here in the road, which is perfect. The water's running this direction and that direction. So we would put a driveway right here with a culvert, of course, and then it can come right in through here. Semis can come through here and do the loop and back up there. Service the green bins. The bins will sit there to feed the barn. So it'll be a nice U-shaped loop for semis in and out.
So, okay, um, with that being said, I think we heard enough. I would make a motion to table the um. Waiver allowance on the building until we have a chance to. Elaborate with. Secondary roads and zoning and make a decision.
I would second that. Motion in a second to table action until our next regular meeting. All those in favor? I, motion carried. Thank you for your time.
I'm not trying to hold things up, I guess.
No, appreciate your time and.
No, we appreciate it. Good questions. It's you're doing what you feel you need to do and. It's serving everybody, you know, I, we want to be good producers and do it the right way. And that's why we're here, you know, I mean, um. Trying to do it the right way and.
Well, this is the time to do all this. It's always nice to. If somebody does ask you about it, it's always nice to have been there and say, yeah, we've talked about it, we've looked at it. Uh, versus after the cement trucks have been there.
We had one of those outside Bellevue, later, putting up a new garage and it was right out in the front yarders. Housing development, it's like, oh, you can't do that. And then, you know, I don't know if they use it for a driveway and move the garage backwards supposed to be, but.
Christina, Christina.
Yes.
The one thing Christina mentioned that I think is appropriate is that it's a forty foot for ag buildings, okay? And at some point, you know. We want to, we want to do it to where it can daylight out the back and be fit. Right now, I think we're fifty-eight feet is where it stays. Later on, we really don't want it any closer. We need room there for the bins and stuff, so we want to be closer just. Further away from the road is, we don't want to be closer, but if we can't daylight, then we have fill and I know the engineers don't like buildings on fill. The other thing is there's many area ag barns. They're a lot closer than this. Some are feeding their cattle in the right of way, in the ditch, right off the road. The building sits twenty feet from the right of way and they're, they're using the right of way to feed the cat. I mean, it. Drive down there and take a look. So I'm not doing something that's. I mean, I'm fifty feet further than other people that have very new buildings in the last five or ten years, so. I, I, I'm just setting the stage for what we're doing, I think. So thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
Call me if you have any questions during.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks Christina.
Yeah.
Okay, Lisa.
Okay. This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So move. Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor? I, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve um, two handwritten warrants today, one for a hundred and ninety dollars for conference registration for Shelley Hoy. And the second one to R D O Truck Center for eight thousand dollars for a down payment on two twenty twenty-three max granted trucks.
Remove second.
Motion in a second to approve the handwritten warrants. All those in favor? Motion carry.
Um, I also today need a motion to approve. Resolution number eight sixty-six dash zero two dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two. Approving the construction contract and bond for the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center.
Motion to approve.
I would say.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
I.
I. Motion carry.
And that's kind of the kind of, the final step in our, all of our bonding process and. You know, the financial side of the law enforcement center today, that is the last step, so um, that's the good news of today. I also need a motion to approve resolution number eight sixty-seven dash zero two dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two. To approve an operating transfer for a hundred thousand dollars from the general basic fund, oh one thousand to the capital projects jail fund. Thirty-three thousand and two. Hopefully, we don't believe that we need that much money. We hopefully need very little money. But just in case between now and the closing of our loan, we're just trying to cover ourselves um, because. And then, and then whatever we don't use, we're gonna transfer back.
So then, do I understand that whatever we do spend gets reimbursed back from the bond?
We are looking at that as um, Shelley and I stayed last night. We've got a Excel spreadsheet that we've looked at. And trying to determine what will be reimbursable and what will not.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second, motion in a second for the transfer, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carry.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Okay, uh, Lisa stepped out or Luanne stepped out, so. Um.
Um. Are you waiting for Joe, Jennifer, or?
No, he's coming on Zoom.
He's on the public link already.
Yep.
Yeah. So we'll recess, we'll, we'll do Luanne and then we can move right into you and recon. This time we'll reconvene and we're being joined by Luanne Goki, our administrative assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Calendar for this week. Four o'clock this afternoon is a um, Book of the River Watership Management Authority in your meeting by Zoom for. Especially for Larry, but for any who didn't want to do that. Wednesday, February twenty-third at nine AM is Iris meeting um, interview for Larry. Um, I don't, if they've offered a conference call option at this point, I'll have to find out.
Is that Zoom?
That's what I have to find out. Only there's a Zoom watch. I didn't read on me, so I have to check. Also tomorrow from three to four thirty is the Early Childhood Iowa State Designation Meeting in Dewitt for Jack. Thursday, February twenty-fourth at one PM is the Early Childhood Iowa HICAP visit for Jack. I assume that as well. Six o'clock Thursday night is the Limestone Bless R C and D meeting by Zoom for Jack. Which will be cut short by the seven o'clock public hearing on the Jackson County Five Year Road Program. For all of you tonight.
This is here.
Here in this office.
As imaginable.
As imaginable, that's correct. Friday, February twenty-fifth at seven AM is the Book of the Leadership Team Meeting for Larry. Um, Monday, February twenty-eighth at one o'clock is the Regional Government Board Meeting in Davenport for Jack. And at four o'clock is the Early Childhood Iowa Council Meeting in Dewitt, also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March first at nine AM. There are no meetings that evening. So I think that's all the business I have for the court, did it get more thunder outside?
No, that's already gonna push your back of your head here.
Oh.
It's so close.
Okay. Okay, do, um, Jennifer, do you have anything for open session or is this just for a work session?
Um, I think the continuation, right? Can we, we have the um, county contribution breakout today, which is your renewal.
Okay.
And then we have our recommendations that Luanne indicated that we needed to present that to you. Would you, what I thought was in the open session was the continuation, which is renewal.
That's what you're talking, okay, same, same terms.
So. What are you saying? Lisa?
I haven't said anything.
So, it sounds like a work session. Or do we have to take action on something that you're presenting?
Well, you're. Um, it, can you guys all hear me? Am I coming through clear?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Well, um, first of all, apologies that I'm not there in person today and much. Prefer to present this information uh, with you all. I felt like it'd be somewhat critical or um. Oh, what's the word that I'm looking for? Hypocritical of us to say risk management and safety and then. Have me drive with the uh, road condition. So my apologies on not being there in person.
Totally understand.
I don't know, sounds like an excuse.
I will say it saved me, uh, saved me about four hours of driving today because I had another appointment after, so. Whatever that's worth, but I, I still promise there's enough information here that it's much more simplistic to go through in person. So I, I truly would have preferred that, but. Uh, just for some clarity, what we're gonna do today is we are gonna go through the I C A P renewal. Uh, it's, it's somewhat hard to determine if that is a uh, open session discussion or work session. And the reason for that is we can present what the renewal is if we made no changes to the program. Um, so that's the type of, you know, typically in the past, I believe. Uh, the former advisor would bring in the renewal and just give it to you all to approve uh, without. Maybe much discussion around that. We do have some changes that. We think the county should at least consider taking as a way to reduce contribution impact. And so, you know, I think of that discussion as maybe more of a. reduce contribution impact. And so, you know, I think of that discussion as maybe more of a work session. The renewal happens on March first, which is a week from today, uh, for the next scheduled public meeting. Um, so I guess I I hate to do this, but we would kind of put that to your group to determine if you think this should be for public discussion or in work session.
Well, we have to take action. We have to be in open session yet.
Unless you Or we have to come back into open session to take action.
Oh, yeah.
So why don't we go take a recess and go into work session and we'll come back and make a decision. So what we need to do.
It, I guess my question is, yeah, because if we took action on the policy moving forward as it was, and we decided after further review, we'd like to make a couple of changes. What's the timeframe or stipulations? Any, any penalty to that? Any ramifications? As far as we change it two weeks, we want to change this to that.
Yeah, what what I would recommend, if you are going to consider changes, my recommendation would be that we, meaning Jennifer and I, go back to ICAEP and say that we had the meeting today, the county plans on continued membership, and you can actually vote to continue membership with the ICAEP program. We could make that pending changes to deductible structure and just inform the underwriter that the renewal takes place on the next public meeting. And thus they are intending to continue membership. They will vote a week from today on the renewal date. We will indicate which invoice they want to accept and bind coverage that day. So long story short, as long as we can determine today that you plan to continue membership with ICAEP, which unless I'm, which unless I'm confused, I don't anticipate that.
For discussion. I, there's no doubt we're going to stay with ICAEP.
Sure. So, uh, we will, we will indicate as such. So maybe it does make sense to go into work session, have a discussion on potential changes, allow you all to evaluate. Jennifer and I will indicate to Tim Butler, our underwriter that membership is planned to be continued and we will make a selection on the specific structure of the policy come the renewal date, March first.
Yeah, that works for me too, Joe.
I guess it, 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 I don't see any reason why we just can't proceed and just keep it in open. All we're going to do is guess what you have recommended to us. Um, I don't think the public doesn't have a right to know what we're discussing. So
Absolutely.
Sure. Just proceed.
So if they want to sit through it, that's.
Yeah, absolutely. If they
Okay, I'm, I'm completely fine with that also. That works for me.
I guess we're at your mercy. You
Here is.
You know, we're here to.
I have a question. I see, I think I see Becky is on. Is that Becky? But my guess is she does not have a microphone. Is that correct? Do we want Becky? I know she had talked about maybe other different insurance. Different insurance, maybe, uh, programs that we might enter into or options.
Why, I should say, do you want to call Becky and see if she wants to come down, Luanne?
Sure.
She certainly is welcome to.
I think you. She's listening.
Of course. She does have a mic there.
Oh, that's
I don't have a microphone or a camera.
She's a little on top sometimes, so she has it.
How can I give you a score of the work session? I hope I gave you one of every document. I can't hear it yet.
Of course.
The first one though should be the Jackson County contribution breakout.
I don't need to be from the center, but I'll just take a chair if there's some. Morning, Joe.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, Joe and Jennifer, you can proceed.
Perfect. So if you are okay with it, I'm going to share my screen. I better make sure that I have the right one. Are you looking at this estimated twenty twenty two Jackson County contributions to ICAEP?
Not right now.
It's the big sheet.
Well, I'm looking at it, but I can't see it. So tell me if I have it in my pack.
It's in your packet. It's over. It's on the long sheet.
Oh, okay.
No, I want to stand it. I think you're right. There's a back, back in the, in the packet. I just can't, yeah. Is it the very back of Lisa's packet? Yeah, it should be the back of the packet I just gave you.
Okay, I'm attempting to share my screen, but I'm not sure if it can be seen up there.
It's not now.
It was.
It was there, but now it's not.
How about now?
Yeah, there you go. Perfect.
Awesome. Okay. So for today's meeting, what, what Jennifer and I wanted to do is one, um, continue with the discussions that we've had to this point, make sure that we are hitting everything in that planned presentation that we had made to the county. So what today's focus is, is on the, uh, ICAEP renewal as of March first. What we did want to look at was during our discussions, we had told you that we expected a pretty significant increase at the renewal based on what we're seeing with other clients. So today's presentation or this first spreadsheet is really a pricing breakdown and structurally, uh, realignment of what the program was, where we projected it to go back in January. What the actual invoice came in at, and then some options for the county to consider. So that's the way that this is broken down line by line. Uh, what's also included is all the actual contribution invoice packets from ICAEP. There is a, uh, separate cyber liability quote, which we will talk about, uh, what that could potentially do for the county. And then there is our total cost of risk calculation, which we actually went through in a work session with Becky and Lisa. And it was really the, I guess, analytics behind how we chose to show you a different policy structure, which the county might consider to want to, uh, reduce the contribution impact, uh, that you're seeing as far as a renewal increase. So what Jennifer and I want to do, we can go is in depth as the group wants to. Um, we can go high level overview. I think today, the most important document that we'll look at is actually the one that we have pulled up. And the reason for that is it gives you that kind of high level summary of all of the options. Um, but then, you know, we'll just have some open discussion on what you all think for structure and how the county wants to move forward for the renewal. So um, nothing as far as questions are off the table. So as I'm going through, feel free to stop me and ask any specific questions that you have. Before I start into this, are there any talking points or things that you want to make sure we cover today?
I guess, Joe, if you're going down to each one of these in particular, I mean, there's one that jumps out right and hits me in the face, but um, otherwise if we're going to go down through them, that's fine. Otherwise, I'd like to talk about that one a little bit.
Okay, um, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so the law enforcement liability.
Yep.
I mean, that one seems to jump out at me. And
Yep.
Is there a reason or what did we change?
Yeah, there's, there's really two reasons for the increase there. You're seeing a year over year increase for law enforcement liability at forty nine percent, which is obviously a very significant increase. There's two drivers of that. The first is ICAEP has a surcharge for anybody that has jail operations. Um, any of their members, what they've seen is there's been significant losses uh, on the law enforcement liability line related to jail operations. It's actually their reinsurance costs have increased significantly. So they are surcharging any members that have jail operations. That's more a kind of holistic or high level, um, reason for the increase. The other one is you'll see here, uh, Jackson County's five year loss ratio on that line is six hundred fifty percent. And that's based on just that one significant loss that happened. I believe that was, let me look here.
Was that the Edwards?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, that would have been back in twenty nineteen, I believe. So that's really the reason for the increase. All of our members that have jail operations are seeing a significant increase there. Uh, but honestly, that, this is one of the higher, um, increases that I've seen and unfortunately, it's just a result of the fact that ICAEP has been unprofitable with the county on this line over a five year period. So where they look to increase contributions, that's part of the reason for that. Any other specific questions as far as that line item or others?
Joe, I think you can just proceed.
Okay. So, um, just going once again, high level overview, what we essentially did are these first two columns are where the county was at last year for their ICAEP contributions. The reason that we split this out separate is when we did our projections, when we met back in January, we gave the county an indication on where we thought the contribution increases would come in at. We did a projection. That was based on the previous advisor's summary overview for ICAEP. So that uh, team, they put together a page that kind of just gave you contributions by line and what the deductible was. And so this is the information that we use to do our projections, which we presented to you. That's actually this column here. There was a difference when we actually got the, um, the invoice packets from ICAEP for Jackson County last year. And what it appears the team did was there is an agency fee that is built into the pricing structure, which is revenue that goes directly to the servicing agent. It appears that what their team did was they just took that agency fee, which you see listed here from last year. And they just put it into individual, um, line items. So that's not a practice that we do. It's not, I wouldn't say it's the most uncommon thing either, but just for transparency and wanting to show you kind of an apples to apples comparison. We showed one, the summary page we based our projections off of, but then the actual invoice packet from last year. So you'll see last year's contribution totals with the ICAEP program were two hundred twenty four thousand, seven hundred thirty two dollars. When we did our projection in January, these are the numbers that we anticipated seeing based on what we've seen from the program and other clients and discussions with our underwriter. Keep in mind at this time also, we did not have the loss information specifically for Jackson County. So these were just an estimate to give you just some type of budgeting guidance as to what you should budget for insurance expense for the county. So that's what this column is. We did project that with no changes, the county would come in at about two hundred fifty five thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Once again, based on the summary that we had. When we received the agent of record change and submitted that to ICAEP, we requested the, um, anniversary packet at that time. It took them uh, a few days to put that together. We needed to provide a little bit of information, but that eventually came back. And where the contributions came in with no changes to the program was at two hundred and sixty thousand, one eighty seven. So it was slightly higher than we projected. Uh, two real reasons for that. One was the fact that once again, we didn't have the lost information. The other thing is there were rating basis changes. And a lot of those are likely just inflation guards for the most part. You'll see that, um, for example, like the property coverage, the total blanket limit this year is at two hundred or twenty four million, three eighty three, nine sixty two. Where last year it was at twenty two million, nine sixty nine, nine sixty one. So a combination of the losses and the rating basis changes, the contribution totals did come in slightly higher than what we projected at two hundred sixty thousand. What we had talked about in our planned presentation, and I'm just going to hop over this document. If you remember, we went through kind of a whole comprehensive plan with some of the high impact issues we identified. The service calendar and what we were going to look at as far as making changes and doing an analysis to maybe increasing deductibles and retentions and seeing if the county can take on a little bit more risk to reduce our contribution impact. So we did do that. And what we looked at was essentially increasing the deductible on all lines of liability coverage up to five thousand, with the exception of auto liability. Uh, what our underwriter indicated was the auto liability rates and the property rates are already priced so aggressively based on their reinsurance costs that increasing our deductibles or our retentions actually didn't have any contribution benefits in the county. So you would be looking at taking on more risk without a contribution reduction. So we didn't make any changes to auto liability or to the property deductibles. So auto liability remained at zero. Property deductible, uh, remained at a thousand. But all the other line items, we did increase. So we moved the general liability deductible to five thousand. We moved the law enforcement liability from three thousand to five thousand. Public officials from twenty five hundred to five thousand. The auto physical damage, uh, deductibles, we increased from three fifty for collision up to a thousand and six hundred for comprehensive up to a thousand. Once again, property remained the same, no changes to the crime. So what happens when we made those changes is it reduced our annual contributions by about ten thousand in doing that. The reason that we selected those lines and why we look to increase was we did a total cost of risk calculation. And once again, we went through this with Lisa and Becky. And what we essentially saw was for claims activity, claims that actually paid out um, incurred minus recovered benefits. There was an expense that the county would incur, um, with their deductible. The last couple of years, there is one general liability claim, uh, in twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty, there is a general liability claim. Uh, let's see here. Which is the only line item that would be, uh, impacted. And then the other years, there's just very few claims on those line items with the exception of, uh, twenty nineteen. So I guess in twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, the increased deductibles, you'd have pure contribution savings because the county wouldn't have incurred additional out of pocket expense. And these years, they're essentially offsetting based on the number of claims and the difference in what we're talking about for deductibles. So Jennifer and I just once again wanted to show the county a way to reduce the contribution impact. Obviously, the way to do that is taking on a little bit more risk. The account historically would justify the county doing so. So based on this example, you're looking at an annual contribution of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, two hundred fifty thousand, seventy dollars as a annual contribution amount. That is a lot of information. The only other thing I'll say is the increase that, um, was referenced earlier. This is essentially looking at what twenty twenty one was, the actual invoice and the difference with no changes in the twenty twenty two invoice. So this increase shows if we made no changes, this is the fixed dollar increase. And this is the percentage increase. Obviously, if we make changes to the, uh, to the deductible, you're going to see less of an increase, but you are taking on more risk. So that's a lot of information I just went through. I'm going to pause there and just ask what questions you have or if there's any discussion you want to have based on what you're seeing here at this point.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So Lisa, maybe you can, can you tell me what we budgeted?
We, we just increased the, we put thirty five thousand in.
We, we just increased, we put thirty-five thousand in.
No, I mean compared to this number. I mean the projection, last year's.
The two twenty-fourth, seven thirty-two?
Yeah, the end is now and it was projected.
Did you reestimate because we didn't have enough money, so we had to.
So what do we have budgeted for next year, do you know?
We put in, we took the two twenty-four plus thirty-five.
Oh, okay, so whatever.
Yeah, so two sixty.
Two sixty, alright, so we're budgeting, okay, so basically.
Well, we were, well, we were told twenty, so then when we kinda had some further discussions and heard that, we're told. So potentially right now, we have it in next year's budget, you know, and we also have to take care of this year's budget.
As far as do the deductibles go, I guess my opinion is it's, how lucky do you feel? I mean, you're rolling, we're rolling the dice for ten thousand dollars. What is the history of us paying deductible out of our pocket?
So that's, uh, sorry, not to, not to jump in, but that's where. Once again, w- we looked at just the history on the account. So you can see here, for example. Last year, there was one general liability claim. So what we are, what we are recommending or what we are showing the county is. If you increase your deductible for general liability from a thousand up to five thousand. If we would have had that structured last year, this one claim would have cost the county an additional four thousand. Of out-of-pocket expense in that instance. But back to our example, the contribution difference in doing so is saving us ten thousand in contributions. So past performance doesn't necessarily dictate, you know, our past history doesn't necessarily dictate future performance. We just, when Jennifer and I were discussing. Uh, to us, we want to show the county options and allow you to make a decision based on. Your risk profile and what you're comfortable taking on. It's just our job to show you options, given that there is such a significant increase. Uh, year over year.
Yeah, I understand that.
Each line either might, you know, I mean, the likelihood of having a claim in each line.
Yeah, I understand. Like I said, you're rolling the dice either way, you know.
It's about thirty, three hundred.
How do you project? Yeah, well, you know, that's what I'm saying. How do you project?
Which that's still zero, right? Zero deductible?
No, we pay, yeah, we pay deductible on that.
So we did change that one, correct?
Depending on, yeah. That raccoon here cost us three hundred fifty dollars instead of a thousand.
It cost you seven hundred on your claims.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's part of how your contributions go up is the amount that was paid out. So if you would have actually paid the thousand. You'd still have nine thousand something in savings on your contributions because you paid it out your own.
Yes, so for those deductibles that have been paid historically, like the three hundred fifty, how much is budgeted for that annually? To pay those out-of-pocket expenses, is there a amount?
I have to go pull my budget, I'm not sure. I don't know, I'd have to look. It's in the supervisor's lineup.
And again, how do you project?
Can we charge back to the sheriff's department? Or to the, to the raccoon's family?
Well, you know, yeah.
DNR, yeah, and you're ridiculous.
I feel, I mean, we've been basically lucky so far and it bounces out. I mean, if we don't have any, we lose it.
Right.
So if we, if we keep it deductible low, we're gonna, we're gonna spend the money regardless. If we put it up, we have a chance of not spending it. It makes sense to me.
But you have a chance of overspending.
I think there are some claims that I've seen for the short time that I've been doing this is that. You do question why we're doing this. You know, why would we, why even submit it to the insurance company to have it affect our rates? I know we've talked about that, that it might sometimes be just easier if we just would have paid the claim.
Well, it's been like that for the last thirty, forty years, you know.
How old some of our squad cars are, you know?
Yeah, oftentimes when we're working with clients, we, you know, our view on risk transfer and insurance is. The primary reason for the county to have insurance is to help us transfer away catastrophic loss. Something that's going to impact the taxpayers and what they pay for property tax. We want to avoid anything. That would be catastrophic, then our next line item is to purchase insurance as efficiently as possible. And so, uh, this is once again an option to, we recognize that you are taking on more risks. So if the county does have, you know, poor performance regarding insurance losses. Your total expenditure could actually exceed this two hundred and sixty thousand based on that. Um, but it would have to be somewhat of a, um. You know, uh, out of probability year for it to be a significant over expenditure. You know, we're talking about if we're having a uncharted frequency amount of claims. Which the county hasn't historically seen, at least for the past five years that we looked at. So. Um, end of the day, once again, it's Jennifer and my job to show you options and give our input. Should the county seek it? We just wanted to show you two different structures that you could potentially structure for the coming year.
Um, Becky and Lisa or Jennifer, like you say, you give us the options, but I also expect a recommendation.
That's my, I was gonna say, of these, what is your recommendation?
Yeah, so my recommendation personally would be to look at the increased deductibles. So that's the reason that this column is in light blue, is if you were to just purely ask us, what do you think? Based on our analysis of the previous year's history, we would recommend the increased deductibles on these lines. Then there's some other, you know, options for the county to consider as well um that are listed down here. And we based it off of you accepting this invoice packet. So you can make all these same decisions if you decide to go this route, but the pricing for the contribution adjustment would be. Um, different. So I'm gonna skip down to here just to hit on it quickly. Cause these are all things that we discussed during our discovery uh in plan presentation meetings together.
Right.
Jen- Jennifer and I did an analysis of if we remove full coverage. For all, all vehicles that were valued at ten thousand or less. Meaning that if you are, or if one of the Jackson County employees is driving a Jackson County vehicle. And they are the at-fault party in an accident, or there's a comprehensive claim. If we remove full coverage from all these vehicles, the contribution saving is only five hundred and sixteen dollars annually. So in our opinion, you know, the juice isn't worth the squeeze concept. We feel like the county is actually better positioned to just leave um the full coverage on those vehicles after looking at it. Because the savings isn't significant. If you have one of those vehicles, that's, let's say, valued at. Six thousand or eight thousand, and the at-fault party is the Jackson County employee. And that vehicle is a total loss. Uh, in that example, the county would receive back either a new vehicle of like kind and quality. For full repairs to that vehicle, and just that one incident totally offsets this contribution savings. And it actually far exceeds that. So we did look at that. Um, we wanted to present it based on us talking.
We're only a five hundred and sixteen dollar debt um reduction.
That could, that could be half our fleet.
Yeah.
Even with the thousand dollar deductible, you're still gonna get the check for seven. It helps put it towards something versus going.
Yeah, so we just wanted to present that because we discussed it. We did talk about um increasing cyber breach coverage up to a million dollars. Uh, which, as you remember, that's the first party coverage. So in the event that the county's systems are breached.
Hope you froze, Joe.
Now you're frozen.
Are all of the twenty twenty-one claims?
Bjorn, you got us covered there. There's our cyber security right there. We stopped them.
But you're looking for client shit.
Sorry about that. Am I back?
You're back.
You're back.
That was a test of our cybersecurity on you.
The timing on that was uh unplanned, I promise. Um, so anyways, that's just once again another option to look at. Right now, ICAP's program does give you two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cyber breach limit. So this is increasing that to a million would cost the county about four thousand of annual premium. And what actually happens is it's a, it's a different policy completely. The company is called Houston Casualty Company. They have their own policy that Jackson County would be the insured on. ICAP removes their two hundred fifty thousand dollar cyber breach coverage. So you get a contribution reduction when you do that, but the difference in. The um Houston casualty premium, which is about eight thousand annually. And your savings with ICAP, which is about a four thousand dollar contribution reduction. The difference is what we put here. So if you essentially bump up from two hundred fifty to a million of coverage for cyber breach. The cost to the county would be an additional four thousand from this column. And then the final things that we talked about were just increasing our excess liability coverage. So if you increase your excess liability coverage, that is this line item here. You have a three million dollar limit now, and that sits over your general liability, auto liability. Law enforcement liability and public officials liability coverages, and each of those are at two million. Um, currently is the underlying plus a three million dollar excess limit. ICAP's form is non-aggregate, which means that each occurrence does not reduce your limit. For the next claim in any given policy year. So right now, the county has five million dollars of coverage between underlying and excess. For any event that falls under these four lines of coverage. So that's a good, good limit for the county to have. We simply wanted to show you options because it's our job, given that. There are higher severity claims and what our industry deems as nuclear claims. Uh, those judgments have happened. What we would say is the bigger exposure to the county. If you're gonna consider spending more money for contributions to better risk transfer. Uh, away exposures from the county, we would recommend looking at increased cyber coverage first. Before looking at increased excess liability coverage.
So Bjorn, what do you think? Yeah.
In my opinion, that jump up from two hundred fifty to a million would be.
Lot of liability, isn't it? The, the point is, I don't think, my only personal feeling, I don't know a lot about it, but what you read in some of these things that. A million ain't gonna touch nothing either. So if they're gonna hold you ransom, a million ain't gonna be nothing either. I, I, it just appears when they go to get something, they, they go to get, you know, I don't know, what's our chances?
Joe, do you have any sort of statistical data on what companies have paid out, like ICAP? What have they paid out in cybersecurity claims? How many claims within the pool?
Yeah, I can look for information on that. I honestly don't have that um off the top of my head or readily available. We see claims activity, just the cyber market in general, increasing at the highest rate for any liability lines. So cyber coverage is greatly outpacing, you know, increases in general liability claims. Even auto liability claims, that's the big one that's out there. I agree with the sentiments that the reality is. A million probably isn't enough coverage for any county, but it's what the market has available. Meaning that the cyber market is very hardened because of increased frequency and severity claims. And so our recommendation to clients always is, the more coverage and limit you have available. The greater likelihood that if a claim occurs, and we follow our um critical incident response plan. And get the underwriting company involved, and they're able to start to work to fight off the cyber attack. And or negotiate with the criminals to try and get that ransomware released. Our perspective is we'd rather have more limit available to do that. Um, but I don't disagree with the sentiments that some of these cyber claims are so significant that. A million would be outpaced. For that reason, the cyber market, it's just hard to get. Access to greater limits than that, and it's, if you can find them, it's very, very expensive. Um, to do so. So if the county, the board, uh, did I freeze again? Um, if, okay, if the county um directed us and you said, hey, this is something that we're worried about. We would really like you to go out and look for higher limits than a million. Jennifer, Jennifer and I are happy to go try and find those at your direction. I just know it will be very, very expensive and very hard for us to find more for cyber breach coverage than a million dollars.
This may be a silly way to look at it, but I look at it also like this is. You guys are very intelligent about what they're doing. They, they come in here, they're gonna attack somebody. They're gonna attack somebody that's got the money to pay it. So if we don't have that money, they're not gonna worry about us. They're gonna go after us when we got two hundred fifty thousand, somebody else got. Is that a way to look at it to say, I'm not tagging them dudes, they ain't got no money, man?
Unfortunately, they've been attacking the little guys first.
I wouldn't rock one that the door's falling off, I go back.
Yeah, the, um, because you're considered a soft hit. And if they can penetrate the soft hit and, and basically uh get you to not do the things that are required. That, you know, that's how they do it. And believe it or not, when I was at that meeting for IMWCA, Joe, they talked about, like, there's even on the dark web. There's like a Yelp review for hackers, and they continuously grow themselves. And part of how you do it is by hitting soft targets first and seeing how much ransom you can get out of them. So it's, they don't, they don't care if you got a million dollars. They're gonna try whatever they can try and move from that. And Joe, I have some of those stats. I can pull them up on my email that I back on from that meeting. I can uh forward it an email to these guys as well.
Sure. What, what I would say uh also is, trust me, we recognize that. Four thousand of additional contributions or premium, that's a significant amount of money. Um, what we can help with, if you choose to not increase your limits. And to be okay with that two hundred fifty thousand dollar cyber breach coverage from ICAP. Uh, there's two benefits that we will look at. The first is that if it's a third-party claim. Meaning that it's not the county that has financial loss. But it is third parties that file suit against the county for their breach of systems. And maybe their lack of duty in protecting information. The excess liability is actually going to kick in and defend and pay out those suits. So as long as it's not the county that has financial loss, we have additional capacity on the excess liability line with ICAP. So that's one benefit. The second thing is that ICAP provides a lot. The second thing is that ICAP provides a lot when it comes to loss control and helping IT departments. It is an investment of time. When they come on site, they'll typically ask for between half a day and a day with your IT department. Um, but what they do is they look at systems, they give feedback of things that can be done to help mitigate risk. So we'd say regardless of if you increase the limit or remain at that two hundred fifty thousand, that's something we would recommend doing over this term is getting ICAP's loss control team specific to cyber coverage um into Jackson County, just to look at ways that we can do the most we possibly can to mitigate risk, even if it's not transferring more to the insurance marketplace. So kind of a a long-winded way of saying, we recognize it's a significant additional spend for contributions. Uh, if we choose not to, we're still gonna get ICAP involved to do what we can to best mitigate risk.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
I mean, are we thinking, are we having discussed our action on this, or we discussing each one of these that we just talked about, or all of the above, or just the?
I guess. Becky, you and Lisa have discussed this with them, gone over this information?
We kind of did an assessment, and they did let us know that they would present the reduction and deductibles where it would make sense to offset the premium, which is the two fifty opposed to the two sixty. One option is to accept that if you've already planned on budgeting two sixty, you could transfer the ten thousand into your line item that you cover your liability with.
I'd like to see the numbers of how many suits were filed for cyber and how much was paid out, like you said. Or somebody asked.
So two separate things. The first one is the premium with the modified deductible right now.
Again, I I see these, but like when you asked, what are the stats of what's been paid out, or what's the amount?
For cyber.
Yeah.
Um, distribution of ransomware attacks across major industries. I have some of that paperwork I can send you.
What, I mean, what about just government entities per se?
Government, um, seven, eight, and seven percent. So you got sixteen and seven, so about thirty percent.
Is this nationwide or what do we call it?
This was a.
So we don't have to break down basically your Iowa counties in Iowa or anything like that. If I was gonna lean anywhere, I'd take the higher deductible and add the cyber if I was gonna think about it, but otherwise I wouldn't do nothing but take the higher deductible, I don't know.
Joe, did you have a total on that sheet that you showed our claims as to if we compared last year, what would we paid out total?
In. Yeah, we, so, so just um to give a highlight, I know we went through this with Becky and Lisa at our last work session briefly, but what we essentially do when we put together a total cost of risk calculation is we look at all the hard costs of risk and how that compares to annual revenues. This is kind of our way of benchmarking if we're doing a good job by helping drive that number down. It's not a perfect science, but it's what we work off of to kind of grade ourselves on how we're transferring risk. So if you look um last year, I should say for clarity, all of these years were estimates. I believe we just put these at kind of five percent increases or maybe three percent increases. But this is actual data from uh last year with insurance premiums paid. These were the uh the deductibles paid for losses. These were the losses that were paid by insurance last year, and this is our annual loss ratio. So if you look, um, for example, the general liability is the one that we're making a recommendation at increasing from a thousand to five thousand. So this would have cost you an extra four thousand out of pocket last year. The one that's harder to determine, I can go back and look if it's beneficial. We saw there were four auto physical damage claims last year. I would need to look and see if those were classified as collision or comprehensive um to know what the out-of-pocket expense was, but I believe these should have each been a thousand total. So my assumption is one thousand, two thousand minus thirty four hundred would be, what's the difference? There is fourteen hundred and four claims would have been for collision uh incidents last year is what we base this information off of. So long story short, last year we would anticipate there would have been about a four thousand plus six fifty per claim. You're looking at about a seven thousand dollar difference last year in what you would have paid out for deductibles compared if if we would have uh structured the policy different last year. And the savings for contribution again is about ten thousand and making those changes.
Are you talking as a whole? Are you talking just under the auto physical damage? That's where our seems our big one lies every year. I don't know how many deer hits we have, but.
He was saying as a whole.
As a whole.
Yeah, as a whole last year for all of these different line items.
I think we had two raccoon, one deer, and a secondary rose.
Three comp and one collision, probably.
And also what we can consider, if the county said, hey, we wanna increase deductibles, but for example, we see a lot of auto physical damage, so maybe we just leave those be. So we increase all deductibles, but we leave the cop and collision deductibles at three hundred fifty dollars and six hundred dollars. We would just look at the difference between these two line items to figure out how much more we would need to add to to this number to keep the uh deductibles the same on auto physical damage. So the difference here is about, what is that?
Your figure is sixty.
Yeah, thirty five hundred is the difference here. So if we increased all deductibles to five thousand except for auto liability and property, and we kept our comp and collision deductibles at three hundred fifty and six hundred, we could structure the policy that way, and you'd be looking at about two hundred fifty three thousand five hundred as an annual contribution if we did it that way. So what what we try and do is, once again, show the county options, give our best recommendation. Um, but there's so many different ways that we can make changes or restructure that. I don't wanna present the board with information overload either and have you feel like you can't make a decision, which is why we kind of give you one option here. But if there's anything specific that you think and say, hey, we wanna see the difference, once again, we're happy to discuss and make those changes.
I guess at this point, I'm com- comfortable with their recommendation.
Well, I mean, what you said there last is pretty interesting, though, as far as leaving the auto and the property deductibles, and then it would be two fifty three something you stated. That's interesting to me. That's, you look at our claim, obviously, on this paper is article physical damage. That's that's the highest correct that we're paying out. So I I don't know, I guess, if that makes sense or not. Either way, I don't think it's a lot of variance in there to.
And then the last thing to keep in mind, obviously, is we're looking at changing the structure for a one-year term. So Jennifer and I will do this meeting with the county every year. We'll actually, in our schedule, yeah, in our schedule, we actually do a pre-continuation meeting. If you look, not to show everything, but we will come in here in November, December for a pre-renewal meeting with contribution and or premium expectations. So once again, that meeting might be where we get back together. In November, December, we analyze how the year has gone to that point. And if we see, hey, we've had three general liability claims and we spent more money out of pocket than we saved in contributions, that's the the risk, or I guess gamble, you take in having the county take on more risk to reduce contributions. Maybe we get together in November, December, see the performance and say, hey, we need to move that deductible back down to a thousand, so we're managing our variable costs um a little bit more. So we can always make changes in the future, and that's why we'll get together and go through this every year as long as you want us to. Um, that's our job as your advisor.
And even a suggestion, because the budget starts in November, December, maybe even August, September. Come and give us an overview of where we're, where we're at.
Sure. We do plan on a um, a six-month promise report in September, October, which is essentially we get back together with Lisa, Becky, and the three of you, if if you would like to be present at that meeting. But what this meeting um in one of these months does is it allows us to go through everything that we put together in our plan and make sure that Jennifer and I are doing everything that we promised. And so what we can look at doing is just having this conversation here again. We probably won't have as good a gauge on where ICAP's contributions will be coming in for the term, but we can at least have the conversation with the underwriter to say, hey, we're six months out. What are you anticipating at this point for um for premium or contribution increases? What's the history on the account look like over these six months? Should we start to gear up for potentially making changes to the structure at that point?
So do we want to increase the the three thousand dollars?
Oh, I guess I missed the three thousand for.
Well, for the collisions that you were just talking about.
Oh, well, you mean that keeps our deductible down? Yeah, I would.
So it looks like off a quick calculation, the premium difference is thirty five, three thousand five hundred thirty six dollars between your forty one, six seventy, and thirty eight, one thirty four. We would, we assume we had three comp deductibles and one collision is what we're thinking. So we would have assumed an additional nineteen hundred and fifty dollars in comp deductibles and an additional four hundred in the collision deductible. So we would have only saved eleven hundred and eighty six dollars on the deductible, auto deductibles last year based on those rates, because we would have assumed twenty two hundred dollars worth of additional exposure to pay up to the thousand dollar deductible. So just that piece alone, eleven eighty six would have been the savings on four.
That definitely is only a almost a wash, but again, we're rolling the dice to say what's gonna happen.
What was the?
And this, and repairs are not gonna get any cheaper.
What was the average on our auto collision claims? Comp auto, uh, that other sheet you had there? It was four last year. What's the, what was the couple of year average?
Yeah, so you go four, six, seven, two, five. So one, actually, if you look at it, this is a a great breakdown. Not that once again, this isn't a perfect science, because each year contributions would have been different, but based on what you just stated, Becky, in this year, making the deductible increases, you would have been slightly ahead, meaning you would have benefited from it. And this year, it would have been close to a complete offset. This year, you probably would have paid out more in deductibles um based on the number of claims. This year, you would have been ahead by making the change. This year, you would have essentially offset. So we're not talking, as long as the account performance is similar, we're really not talking about huge saving or additional expense either way. Um, but once again, to to your point, that might mean it's just worth it to pay additional contributions and not roll the dice at all and just know any claims above those numbers are going to be paid out by the company. Um.
Based on what these new vehicles are costing us, repairs are not gonna get any cheaper. And it's just gonna cost that much, you know, to me, it's worth to keep the deductible low on the vehicles. I don't know. It's just, you know, now you have, you don't have a thirty five thousand vehicle, you got an eighty five thousand dollar vehicle now, you know?
Yeah. So what, based on that, what we would look at doing is taking this, still increasing our liability deductibles for general liability for law enforcement liability and for public officials liability up to five thousand. We would keep our uh auto liability still at zero dollars. We would keep our property deductible still at a thousand dollars. And we would keep our uh auto physical damage deductibles at three hundred fifty and six hundred as opposed to increasing those to a thousand each. And that would, once again, bring our total annual contributions to about two hundred fifty three thousand six hundred.
And we still are in session? I would make that motion.
We aren't in session. We're in a work session.
We are.
Oh, we did? Oh, that's right.
Okay.
I would second that. So your motion is to the two hundred and fifty three thousand six hundred dollars?
Yeah, with the deductible changes as presented.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
My only question I have is you do not view a motion at all to continue with ICAP, correct?
We, do we need a motion for the continuation, Joe?
As long, in my opinion, as long as they're voting on taking our recommendations with the exception of keeping the deductibles for auto physical damage at three fifty five hundred. So we'll get the updated invoice, but if they're voting on accepting that with that minor change, to me, that would be the vote for continuation, because we will put that in force effective um March one. Uh, the only other vote might be for approval for Lisa to submit payment to ICAP on or prior to March first.
Okay, can I amend my motion to include, to extend to work with ICAP and have Lisa do that also?
So my question is, is we will pay next Tuesday. But either if we, and it's too late to do an ACH, so it would have to be by check. Um, it won't get to ICAP next Tuesday.
As long as we, so I will send, once I have the updated invoice, I will send that to Jennifer. She's able to uh print the documents that uh have for signature, just the continuation to uh or the accept, I guess, the approval to accept continued membership. It's essentially this page here.
Yeah.
So, so once we have that and we have this page signed, we can submit that to ICAP. And um there actually is ways to pay online here. We can give you that information, but if you prefer to cut a check and have us submit that to ICAP, we can do that. Coverage will be in effect for March first, as long as we have these documents signed and submitted to the underwriter. And I can send those to Jennifer. She can run across the street and drop those off. Uh, we typically see the auditor sign these uh because they do sign this page here. Lisa signed here for the member proxy on the supplement, so we've seen um the auditor sign these or also kind of the chair of the board sign these. Uh, it doesn't matter to ICAP, they'll accept either.
I just wanna make sure, your motion was to approve, to continue with ICAP for an annual premium of two hundred and fifty three thousand six hundred dollars with changes in deductibles.
Yes, and have either the auditor or the chair sign the required document.
I would, just for the motion, sorry not to get technical, but I would put for approximately two hundred fifty three thousand six hundred, because once we made this change, it might not, that's basically this number minus this number plus this number. So it won't be exactly two fifty three, six hundred. It will be very, very close to that.
Okay, is everybody?
That'll.
Yeah.
Okay, I can second the revised motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried. I do know that ISAC knows, or um ICAP knows that we're staying with them, because we talked, I talked to him, I know Mike talked to him last week. I know the woman said she was working with you, Joe, um for the transition from um our former insurance agent to you. So um they know. Um, our former insurance agent to you, so um, they know we're sticking with them.
Yes, it would be very uncommon for them to not have a heads up, they actually require notice to. Exit the program, but. Technically, if you did vote to go with a different provider and there's not many out there. They just, they need the signed document to officially continue coverage, so it'd be very unusual for you to leave the program at this point. It's just the requirement that they have.
We can do it.
Well, hey, I know uh, we've said it before, but we appreciate the uh, the trust that you provided. Uh, in us to be your insurance and risk management advisors, uh, I feel really excited about the work that. Myself, Jennifer, Becky and Lisa are going to. Get done over the coming year based on that service calendar and we're just grateful to uh. To be the county's insurance advisor, so thanks so much for the trust you placed in us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Still in session here. All I have for unfinished or maybe update is I did get a call from um, Henson's campaign. Chief of Staff, uh, last week and they said they continued. Um, they could come to a settlement, they continued the twenty one month end anyway now. They're still very hopeful that they're going to get this budget done in the next two weeks, so we still are in the running for that.
Oh, that'd be good.
I didn't get an answer yes or no, but she did, they were good enough to call me and let me know that. The Holy Trust funded running very smoothly and. Claims that have been inputted and work being done and being paid and. So the. Underprivileged are the. Or the system's working, I should say.
Is there any other business coming for our meeting today? Motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.